Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There are no objections. The agenda will stand approved as written. The next item on the agenda is a presentation. And the city manager is going to introduce our new police chief, Brandon Moen. Or Chief Moen.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I'm really excited to announce our brand-new chief of police, Brandon Moen. He's been on the job for a week now. And just to give you a little bit of background on Chief Moen. So he actually was an urban planner at one time in his career. He got a degree in urban and regional planning. Tried that for a few years, and then realized that his true calling was to be a police officer. So in 2006, he was hired by the King County Sheriff's Department. And just a few short years later, he was promoted to sergeant. And he's been working in, as a sergeant, in the City of Shoreline for a number of years now. One thing that's really cool about him is he took the lead on that new radar program, where a mental health professional rides along with police officers, and all the grant money that goes with that. He not only managed to plan for Shoreline, but also for Kenmore. So he's already familiar with what we're doing. And as a sergeant, he's had to do, had to provide some of that overlapping supervision to Kenmore from the City of Shoreline. And if that wasn't enough, he got his start here in Kenmore. His first city he was assigned to back in 2006 was the City of Kenmore. So he's coming home. So, you know, we're really glad to have him. We did a pretty rigorous interview process. I interviewed a number of applicants. We had three panels made up of residents and council members and business members and people from the school district. And we even had a student. And so all three panels unanimously selected Brandon Moen to be our next chief of police. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Brandon, if you have any words.
Tough act to follow. I really appreciate the opportunity to do this. This is a tremendous honor for me, a big step up to take on a position like this in a city of this size. And like Mr. Carl Lindsey said, I started here. So it's all come full circle, and I've returned to where I first started learning to be a police officer. So now to be in a leadership role and have the opportunity to lead such a great group of officers that I've known for some time is something that I am really honored to do, and I'm quite honestly humbled. And last week has been great, and I'm learning quickly. And I have a great crew here of workers that I've been able to be with and really enjoyed it. So thank you again for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Chief. I know that we're very proud of the officers we have here assigned to Kenmore. We regularly get compliments on them and the way they interact with the public. And we're really proud to have you as part of the force. So thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. And we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Will the clerk please call the first person?
Phyllis Finley. Good evening. Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. During the staff report tonight, Debbie Bent will be recommending that you ratify the amendments to the King County countywide planning policies. The staff has reviewed the materials, and I assume you have as well. As the documents show, the policies were endorsed by the King County Council and passed by ordinance eight to one on October 8th. If you choose to ratify the amendments, you are undoubtedly aware of item number three of motion eighteen dash one. Quote, "Look for opportunities for shared use of buildings, fields, parking, and other facilities between the city or county and the school district," unquote. Accordingly, Dow Constantine's letter to Rod Dombowski, July 3rd, explains, quote, "This ordinance integrates the goals of the King County Strategic Plan by recognizing the role of land use planning in shaping an environmentally sustainable and economically viable future for all people in King County," unquote. Environmentally sustainable and economically viable. Partnering with the school district to share amenities is not an offbeat, untenable idea of a few citizens in the small city of Kenmore. This is a growing countywide common sense approach. This year, you invited input from the cities of Kirkland and Lake Forest Park regarding their management of finances. I encourage you in the same way to gather input from the city of Kirkland and the Lake Washington School District to ascertain just exactly how they created such a successful partnership, especially with their recent project at Finn Hill Middle School. Partnering with the school district may not get you from, quote, "zero to a hundred," unquote, of additional field space in one fell swoop. But the total price tag for multiple fields will undoubtedly come in less than five to seven and a half million dollars. And assuming the goal, as stated, is to provide more field space for Kenmore's youth, it will meet that goal in a fiscally responsible way. Another related point of view is that there are many amenities and services not available within the city limits. For example, I have to drive all the way to Lake Forest Park to go to a hardware store. What about a movie theater, a swimming pool, a fill-in-the-blank? Maybe it's time to step back from the notion that it's the responsibility of the citizens of Kenmore to exorbitantly pay for extravagant athletic fields for private sports leagues. Please use Kenmore's limited finances to provide basic services. Please focus on reducing excessive unnecessary spending, at least as much as you focus on increasing revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
No one else has signed up to speak?
Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else wishing to talk about something that's important to the community? Okay, hearing nobody. We'll close. Citizen comments. Thank you, Ms. Finley. We will be discussing certainly the CPP later this evening. And we will look forward to the EIS and what it's got to say. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any comments? Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is mid-biennium budget adjustments for 2019 and '20 and salary plan for 2020. Ms. Gregory.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, Council. The mid-biennium review of the 2019-2020 budget as required by RCW is complete. And tonight is the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the budget that the council approved in November of 2018. First, I need to point out a correction to the ordinance itself, a corrected version of which has been placed on the dais. The title and the fifth whereas should not have listed the Transportation Capital Fund as one of the funds to be amended. Instead, the ordinance should have included the Strategic Opportunities Fund and the Equipment Replacement Fund. So a strikeout version, corrected version, is on the dais, and the clerk has a copy. None of the content or the numbers have changed, only those corrections on the first page. After the public hearing, and should there be no further amendments to the proposed amended budget, council is asked, or will be asked, to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash zero five zero with the corrections, which will amend the 2019-2020 biennial budget and approve the salary plan for 2020. Amendments are proposed for nine funds, which I will summarize, beginning with the general fund, and which are displayed on the screen. This is the worksheet, budget worksheet adjustments that was included in the agenda bill and in the packet, so that others can try to follow along. See if I can make it a tiny bit bigger. So the 2018 fiscal year closed with a fund balance of $4.9 million, which was 1.1 million more than had been projected and 2.4 million more than our general target of 2.5. So this provided an opportunity for the city to allocate an additional $1 million for slurry and crack sealing, which is one proposed amendment, as a transfer to the street funds' road preservation account. A transfer to the Strategic Opportunities Fund of $624,000 is also made possible by this favorable year-end balance, which could bring that fund reserve to over $3 million by the end of 2020. One reason for this favorable fund balance was that little was spent in 2018 for the public works' operational startup costs. Of the $854,000 budgeted in 2018, only $44,000 was spent. Therefore, it is proposed that $810,000 be carried forward and rebudgeted in 2019, since most of the startup costs have been incurred this year. Other adjustments in the general fund include the recognition of better-than-expected sales tax revenues projected to be at least $550,000 for the biennium. And an expenditure budget of $410,000 related to the Financial Sustainability Project is proposed, as well as $25,000 for a vehicle for the Development Services Department. These amendments for the general fund would result in a projected general fund balance of $2.8 million. The only amendment in the street fund is the receipt of the $1 million from the general fund and an increase offsetting to the road preservation account for the slurry and crack sealing, so there's no net impact there. The Park Capital Fund includes several amendments. First is an allocation from the state of Washington for $151,000 for the Twin Springs Park, both as a revenue and an increase to the project expenditure budget. The Rhododendron Park Boathouse budget is amended to reflect an increase in accordance with the recent CIP action to recognize funding from the King County Youth Activities Grant in the North Shore School District. The St. Edward EIS budget is reduced to $220,000 from $300 and reflects $120,000 additional city impact fees to replace the RCO grant funds that will not be forthcoming. The budget for the land conversion acquisition for the Squire's Landing Project is reduced from $1.7 million to $1.2 million and recognizes $400,000 of Swamp Creek Basin Funds as one of the resources for that acquisition. The Park Impact Fee Fund requires an amendment to transfer $120,000 to Park Capital for the St. Edward EIS as a replacement for those RC funds as just mentioned. The Sumamish River Bridge Fund Amendment recognizes $465,000 of revenue, which is a transfer from the surface water management fees to provide funds for the surface water components of the bridge budget. So that comes in not only as a revenue, but an expenditure. An offset to that transaction is the Surface Water Fund, where an expenditure is required for a transfer to the bridge fund. And also, due to the recent rate increases, fees are higher than expected, and an increase to the revenue budget is proposed in the amount of $400,000. Also, two additional vehicles are requested to be purchased for this fund for use by the surface water technicians, seasonal, and intern staff. The Swamp Creek Basin Fund Amendment recognizes the transfer out of funds to Park Capital for that Squire's Landing Conversion acquisition previously mentioned. The Equipment Replacement Fund, we have a proposal to acquire an electric vehicle for shared pool car purposes and to replace the Taurus that we've had for many years. In the Strategic Opportunities Fund, an amendment recognizes the additional revenue of $624,000, which was the transfer from the general fund reserves previously mentioned. The other topic that is included with the ordinance as Exhibit A is the proposed update to the salary plan for 2020, which incorporates an increase for all of the ranges of 1.7% using the June CPIW index, the index we have historically used for salary increases. This increase is well within the salary increase assumption for the 2020 budget. And another item I'd like to note is that this would be the first year, in my experience, there will be no 2020 increase to the Regent's Health First Medical Delta Edition or Vision Insurance premiums paid by the city. So that's a very positive outcome this year. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, either before you open the public hearing or after. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing open for the mid-biennium budget adjustments for 2019 and 2020 and the salary plan for 2020. Anybody wishing to speak?
No one has signed up to speak.
Anybody wishing to be heard on the mid-biennium budget adjustments? Anybody wishing to be heard on the mid-biennium budget adjustments for 2019, 2020, and salary plan for 2020? Ms. Finley? No, we're just comments. If there are no comments, I will declare the hearing closed. Any other, council have any more, any other additional questions? Hearing done. The chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash zero five zero zero, approving the mid-biennium budget adjustments for 2019, 2020, and the salary plan for 2020.
Aye, so move.
Approved as amended.
Approved as amended, yes, as amended.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Since we have the corrected one in front of us, I guess it's just better to say amended. Not, I don't think necessary. So, anyway. Motion in front of us, then, is to approve as amended ordinance number nineteen dash zero five zero zero. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, ordinance number nineteen dash zero five oh one relating to 2020, regular property tax. Ms. Gregory.
Once again, thank you very much. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero five zero one relating to the 2020 regular property tax levy is presented for adoption. A public hearing on the tax levy was conducted on November 12th. We can do a no-show here. At which time, a presentation was presented. This ordinance includes a levy request of $5,307,000, which is an increase of 3% over the 2019 levy, plus new construction of $99,000. Generally, a 1% increase would be the maximum the city could raise the levy. However, because the city did not levy the full 1% for a number of years in the past, bank tax capacity exists, which can be used at this time to increase the levy by 3%. The budget adopted for 2019 to 2020 does include an assumption that the levy would be increased by 3% in 2020. The additional 2% will provide just over $101,000 to the city next year and will have a compounding benefit in future years. But due to the favorable increase in assessed value this year, which was just over 9.5%, the tax rate is expected to decline to about $1 per $1,000 of assessed value, a decrease of 4%. With that, my recommendation is adoption of ordinance nineteen dash five oh one, oh five oh one, increasing the levy by 3%. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Hearing done. Chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash zero five zero one relating to the 2020 regular property tax.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. There are no further questions or comments. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Mayor Baker. Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, and I'd like to state that I did not support this last year, but I am supporting it. And I won't go through all the reasons why I didn't support it last year, but 976 and the unique circumstances do, I think, make this more important.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Six to one. Pass.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number nineteen dash zero five zero two, setting excess property tax levy for 2020. Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. Last ordinance for me tonight. Ordinance nineteen dash zero five zero two relating to the 2020 excess property tax levy is presented for adoption. And a public hearing on this tax levy was conducted on November 12th. So this levy, as authorized by the Walkways and Waterways Proposition One, will provide for the 2020 repayment of the debt on the general obligation bonds that were issued in 2016. That payment is $529,650. Since no additional bonds are expected to be issued over the next couple of months, no additional levy is requested at this time. So the expected tax rate for this excess levy will be about 10 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. And should the next series of bonds be issued later in 2020, the tax rate will increase in 2021 accordingly in order to pay the debt on those additional bonds. So what I'm trying to alert everyone is that even though the tax rate will drop in 2020 because we haven't gone ahead with the 2019 bonds, in 2021, should they be issued in the interim, the rate will bump up again about 10 or 11 cents per thousand.
Any questions? Hearing done. Chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash zero five zero two, setting excess property tax levy for 2020.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. If there's no further questions or comments, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Mayor Baker. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Pass. Six to one.
All right. Next item on the agenda is resolution number nineteen dash three three two, adopting the City of Kenmore's 2020 fee schedule. Ms. Whitman.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tila Whitman. I'm here today with the 2020 fee schedule updates. Basically, how these work is a lot of our fees in our code are not with line item. They're just adopted by resolution, so that is updated yearly. And that's what I have for you today. This fee schedule, if adopted, would be effective January 1st, 2020. City Hall will be closed, but we accept online applications basically 24/7. So the changes we have are outlined in the agenda item in front of you. One of the changes is to update the development services fees in Section Four by the Consumer Price Index, which is 1.7%. It does not include all of the fees in that section. So it doesn't include appeal fees, park and school impact fees, some utility right-of-way application fees, and some other permit-type fees. We made some minor changes, matching fees. I added, re-added the legal lot status request, which was inadvertently removed from the 2019 fee schedule. And then some, added some fees that had been approved as part of a policy, but incorporated them into the schedule. A lot of the changes also were adopted as part of ordinances earlier this year. Those include the parks' impact fees, school impact fees, surface water annual service charges, which is actually last year, and stormwater capital facility charges. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Marshall.
Could you explain a little about the legal lot status request? And then who is the type of customer who requests it most often? Is it somebody just doing a subdivision or for a single lot? Or a house, if you know, their own? Or is it developer, if you know?
It can be both. So sometimes when properties are subdivided, certain parts of the land are set aside as tracks. Sometimes that information is lost over time. Or in some cases, people have two lots, and they opt to sort of remove the middle line between the lots. And essentially, what that request is, it's very similar to like a zoning request letter. They basically say, here are all the reasons why I think this is a legal lot. And then we basically review their research, do our own research, and provide a letter to them saying, yes, we agree this lot can be developed. So that could be a subdivision, or it could be just a single family home. Typically, they're vacant.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
I have a little question. Looking at item five and item six. So townhomes in five, townhomes are added to the condominium category. And in six, they're added to the multifamily category. Can you kind of just go over the significance of the different ways that those are categorized and maybe any alternatives to that proposal? I mean, is there, for example, in the transportation impact fee, is there a multifamily category? Or is that, is there more differentiation there than on the park impact fees? I just, I'm not quite clear on why it's different.
So I can speak a little bit about this. Maybe Brian can take it, too. Transportation impact fees are a little bit different than park impact fees, just because transportation fees are based on, like, in transportation engineers, it's called an ITE land use category.
Yeah, you're doing great.
That's all you're gonna say?
The transportation, they look at the actual use that we're doing, and they can, the ITE is a manual that assigns the actual rate. Whereas the park impact fees just have the product of multifamily or residential, single-family.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Smith.
On the, on the transportation impact fees and the park impact fees, they both go up with the CPI every year?
Typically, yes, they do.
And have they always done that, or is that, was that a recent thing that we changed? I couldn't remember when I saw that.
Typically, we either will do a study on the fees, and where there is a study, we'll go with that recommended rate. And if there's not a study, we'll go with the CPI. There has been a couple of years that council opted out of increasing the fees by the CPI. There has been a couple of years that council opted out of increasing the fees by the CPI.
That's, so you just hit on what I was wondering, because I remember doing studies in the past to figure out where those impact fees should be. So we're, we basically won't do those anymore. We'll just go with the CPI adjustment?
We plan on doing a transportation impact fee analysis in a couple of years, and so when we do that analysis, we'll not do a CPI increase at that time.
I got you. Great. Thanks.
Anything else? If there's no other questions or comments, Chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution number nineteen dash three three two, adopting the City of Kenmore's two thousand twenty fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Gregory, do you want to do the roll call?
Can I please confirm who made the motion in the second?
Yep. In the second, was Councilmember Shrubnik.
Councilmember Curtis. Thank you. Okay, on, on the resolution, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Pass. Seven, zero. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, resolution number nineteen dash three three three, adopting changes to city personnel policies to revise language to section six point four, vacation and sick leave donation, shared leave. Mr. Carlinsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the City Council. You know, we have some guests in the room. I think we have some Inglemore High School students here.
I was, I was going to ask that question in a few minutes.
All right.
Were you guys with Mrs. Baker's class?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So, so, this is, there you go.
Yeah.
I had the pleasure of addressing three different classes, and so this warms my heart to see that you guys came out here, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I think the senior class president might even be in the room.
You think so?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ava.
I don't mean to embarrass her. Sorry about that, Ava. But hopefully, we'll be able to make this meeting a little more exciting for them. So far, it's been kind of like watching paint dry, don't you think?
I don't, I don't see any hope of that. I thought it was riveting.
All right. Anyway, so in front of you is a resolution proposing to amend the personnel policies. Right now, we have a share lead, shared leave program, where if an employee has an extraordinary or severe health condition, that they can get donated leave from other employees. Right now, our policy says that in order for the employee to receive donated leave, they have to deplete all of their existing accrued leave. This proposed amendment allows the receiving employee to maintain about forty hours of leave in their bank and still receive donated leave. It also allows the ability to donate sick leave to become sick leave. Right now, the policy only allows the donation of vacation leave to become sick leave. Sick leave, according to this proposal, would be on an hour-for-hour basis. In the, in the almost eight years I've been working for the City of Kenmore, I've seen donated leave come up a handful of times, maybe four or five times since I've been here. Usually, in most cases, it's from a higher-paid employee to someone who's paid less. And also, what we're proposing tonight is similar to what I've seen in the last two cities that I've worked for. We didn't do a survey of a whole bunch of other cities, but I can tell you in my own experience, what, what's being proposed is, is what I've seen in the past, so.
Any questions? Councilmember Curtis.
So I had two concerns, but first, a quick question. What happens to unused sick pay? If somebody doesn't use their sick pay?
It goes back to the donating employee.
No, I mean, just, so, just a person with vacation pay and sick pay?
Oh, okay.
If they're healthy all year, and they don't need one single hour of sick pay, what happens to that?
It accrues, but what happens when an employee finally leaves the city? They can only cash out up to a certain amount at a certain percentage.
Do you know what that percentage is approximately?
Our finance director might. It's either ten or twenty percent.
If a person retires, they're entitled to fifty percent of their sick leave balance. If a person terminates in good standing, leaves, resigns, they're entitled to twenty-five percent of their sick leave balance. There is a cap on cash outs, very high, I think it's like seven, seven hundred hours. So you could accrue, you know, fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, but there's a cap at, I believe, seven hundred.
Yep. So the reason I ask that is when people are donating vacation hours, my assumption is all vacation will be used, either by the person or somebody else. That is an understanding, it's part of, it's part of our budget, but sick pay feels different to me. It's a benefit that hopefully people won't need, but sometimes people do. It's like insurance. We hope we, we won't have our house burn or our cars in an accident, but sometimes it happens, so we share risk. So it feels like we're taking a sick pay that will get paid at some discounted rate, and we're turning it into real money at a full rate. And so it feels like we're adding a benefit that, to me, I'm not sure we need to be adding as we're looking toward over this next year or two of how are we going to balance budget and how we're looking forward. This discussion in a year might look very different to me than it does now, but right now, I'm not inclined to add more expenses by transferring sick pay into, into vacation. So that's my first thought. The second one is the forty hours that they get to reserve in vacation before they get to switch and take other people's hours feels like a lot. I mean, that's a week of vacation. Most doctor visits, physical therapy, follow-up, whatever people had going on, I, I would think would be in the matter of, you know, two-to-four-hour visits, maybe once or twice a week. So to me, that seems excessive, and so to go from zero, they must expend it all, up to forty, seems like a big jump. I could probably feel comfortable with twenty, because I see the logic to try to protect a little bit, but forty just seems like, that's a whole week of vacation. It just seems like more than I would expect. Those are my two concerns.
Anybody else? Councilmembers?
Has this been a request, Rob, that, to make this change? Has this been something that's come up often, or I'm just curious what?
Like I said, this is pretty rare. Doesn't, it's happened several times since I've been here, so it doesn't come up very often. But there was an instance recently where it made sense to make this change or request this change.
I appreciate this, Rob. You know, I work at the state and in the state government. We've gotten multiple requests from folks who have, maybe they're having an issue with a, you know, a new baby, or, or they get, or their spouse gets cancer. I've had a couple coworkers with things like that in the last couple of years. And at the state, we're allowed to donate sick over to other folks after we have a certain, we have to have so much sick left in our own bank. If we're going to donate, I can't remember what it is, like one hundred eighty hours, two hundred hours, something like that. And I, I think it's a good policy. I think allowing people to not, allowing people to deal with fairly extraordinary circumstances and not lose their salary if their coworkers are willing to help them out, I think is a positive thing. I think it's good for our morale. I think it's good for, for our employees, and I like the addition of allowing sick to flip over. You know, I'd be fine with Councilmember Curtis's suggestion to maybe bring it down to twenty hours for accrue, for vacation before other things kick in, if, kind of that's what the council wants to do. But I, I think, you know, people helping people is not a bad thing, and the other option is people are either forced to go back to work while their family member or they are still dealing with something that's fairly catastrophic, or they're not getting paid, and I don't think that's a, that's what we want to be doing to our employees either. So, I mean, these are used, as Rob said, fairly sparse, you know, not, not regularly, and they're used for fairly extraordinary circumstances. It frankly takes a lot for somebody to ask their coworkers for help, I think. I don't think this is something that's used lightly. So I think if it keeps our employees, you know, financially and emotionally safe, and gives them that sort of protection, I think it's a good thing. So I appreciate the changes. Thanks, Rob.
If I could make the case for forty, you could have a scenario where an employee had a family vacation planned in January, but in September, they had a major emergency surgery, and they had to be out for several months after the surgery, but they're well enough so that they could go on that vacation that they had planned and paid for in January, and maybe it was a week-long vacation. So that kind of scenario would protect them and, and allow them to still take that vacation.
Councilmember Curtis?
I would argue that unpaid leave could cover that. Vacations are a choice that people take, and I'm not trying to be harsh or mean to people, and I understand the idea of it's generous for people to donate their sick pay, but for some people, they're donating, they could donate hundreds of hours of sick pay at no cost to them at all because they've got so much in their bank, and it's the city paying it. It's not the other person. So as long as we realize that we're giving away city funds to do this, that's okay, but, but it's not the other person that's necessarily giving anything up. It's the idea they're giving up. They care about their employee, their, their fellow employees, which is important.
Councilmember Marshall?
I'm in favor of the full forty, for the reasons the city manager alluded to and others we can anticipate.
All right. If there are no more comments or questions, Chair will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number nineteen dash three three three, adopting changes to the city's personnel policies to revise language of, to section six, dot four, vacation and sick leave donation, shared leave.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
No.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Six to one. Pass.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Ms. Gregory, you're back again. Receiving filed the September two thousand nineteen financial report for the City of
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Councilmembers, yes, I'm back again to present the September two thousand nineteen financial report for your information and review. So September is almost, but not quite, the end of the first year of the biennium, and at this point in time, I have to tell you that expenditures are exceeding revenues by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is one of those times I can't say that revenues are outpacing expenditures, which I know you like to hear, but you also know that property taxes, the city's greatest revenue source, are due in April and October. So this out-of-balance situation is always corrected by the end of October, and we're back in the black. One of the most notable aspects and bright spots in the financial situations this year is the sustained level of sales taxes, which have been higher than two thousand eighteen all year long. In fact, by September, actual receipts are two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars greater than two thousand eighteen, and you can see this on the charts on pages two and three of the financial report. And we believe that these receipts will be sustainable because I believe they're, they're due to the internet sales tax situation that has come about in the last two years. On the other hand, utility taxes continue to be disappointing and less than projected, especially the cell and telephone taxes. But all other revenues and expenditures are pretty much on track at this point, although the interfund transfers between the general fund and the street fund and other funds have not yet been recorded. In other capital resource funds, which we keep an eye on throughout the year, real estate excise taxes are also stronger than expected and are already at fifty-three percent of the two-year budget. Park impact fees, however, are only at eighteen percent of the biennial budget, and transportation impact fees at twenty-one percent, which is pretty low for this time of year. However, we did take this into consideration in budgeting the capital projects and in doing our forecasting, so no project is, appears to be in jeopardy. Also, as mentioned in the budget amendment presentation earlier, surface water fees are trending much higher than the budget due to the rate increase that was put into effect in two thousand nineteen, and this will allow improved funding for surface water projects and programs going forward. The last page of that monthly report shows the historical revenues from the Transportation Benefit District, and as you know, the city received about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for street maintenance, which due to Initiative nine seven six will now need to be absorbed into our budget in other ways, at least for the time being. Citywide cash investment holdings total about twenty-eight million dollars, including bond proceeds, and our yields are now over two percent. This concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions about the September financial report?
Any questions? Hearing none, and if there are no objections, we will receive the financial report and file it. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, staff report, update on amendments, King County, county-wide planning policies. Ms. Spence?
So staff has reviewed the proposed amendments to the King County, county-wide planning policies, and those amendments recommend ten best practices that would facilitate the siting of public schools inside the urban growth area. Staff recommends that council ratifies the amendments. These amendments were adopted by ordinance by King County, so the next step then is ratification by the cities, and ratification means that you don't have to take any action. By taking no action, they would deem to have been ratified. If you don't agree with the recommendations, you would need to take action by January twenty third. Staff is recommending that you take no action so that these amendments or policies are indeed ratified.
Questions? Councilmember Shrubnik?
Just one, just sort of overarching question. I mean, we're pretty built out in Kenmore. I mean, are there, I mean, I kind of look through them, and it seems like we're already kind of doing everything we can. I guess in, in, you know, your opinion, is there much more we can do? Because it's talking about citing schools.
Correct.
Right, as opposed to sharing school properties. So is, is there much more we could be doing along these lines than what we're already doing? And do, and does, I'm not aware that North Shore plans to have any more schools within our boundaries at this time.
No, but I guess that's something that they would have to assess based on the growth that they're anticipating within the school district, so if there's either a need for a new school or an expansion of a school facility, then that's something that we would take a look at. But you're correct, there's probably, looking at these best practices, we are doing what we're doing, but if there is an opportunity to do more, then that's what we would do, and these best practices kind of give us the ability to do that, and Rob's waving at me, so I think he's got something to say.
Yeah, well said, Debbie, and this is kind of a pet peeve of mine, because it indirectly affects us. I've seen the school district citing new facilities outside the U G A, which bugs me because it, it results in a shift, right? And so the, the shift is outward into the rural areas, which changes school enrollments and densities of schools and, and good use of existing urban facilities. So I think it's, this is a good policy, and I think we should be trying to get our schools to even go vertical on existing school sites rather than spreading out on portables. So, yeah, I think there's definitely more that can be done in the urban areas.
This just happened in North Shore School District, didn't it?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Actually, just responding to what Rob just said. If you want to fix it so schools can build up, you have to change the state law, the, the state funding formula for how we do schools because it state funding formula for how we do schools, because it encourages the kind of California style with no hallways sorts of buildings, because the state won't pay for hallways, and the state won't, the state won't pay for stairways. So you end up building these big sprawling things with all these breezeways as a way to cut costs. So that's a whole different discussion, but.
All right, any other comments, questions? So, no objections, we will do nothing.
I know, it's one of those odd situations, but.
I know.
Thank you.
I know, it's a strange one. All right. Councilmember? Reports, comments, initiatives? Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
I have to say, go Vikes, all Vikings who are here, and I absolutely encourage you guys, don't just come this one time. Think about something that's really important to you, because you guys are the future. You got to be talking up here. You got to come out here. You got to let us know how you feel. You're the ones that matter. Thanks for coming out.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yeah, I kind of want to underscore the same thing, that this probably wasn't the most intellating meeting that we've had. There are others. Check the agendas, and then you'll kind of pick and choose.
But if you ever need a good nap, come on down. Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor?
Not a lot to add. I was, I just got back last night from the National League of Cities Conference in San Antonio, where I took some really interesting classes about racial equity and how to be a better active listener, which is a skill that I'm actively trying to work on. That class was really interesting, because we had to do this exercise where we told a story to somebody, and they had to look at us and not give any sort of acknowledgement that they were, like, no nodding. It was the most uncomfortable three minutes you've ever spent in your life, talking to somebody, just staring at you, and then doing it to somebody else was really uncomfortable, too. Anyway, it was really interesting. Got to talk, we got to meet a lot of folks from all over the state and the country, and it's always just a useful place to network and hear what other people are dealing with, and bounce ideas off of folks and see what they're doing. So it was a good trip.
Guys, please say hi to Mr. Baker for me, and give the junior class warning that I may be coming again. So I, too, was at the meeting, the National League of Cities Annual Meeting, and I had the, the pleasure of having a little refreshment with Peter Kagiyama, and was up in the front row screaming at, at Peter when he was giving his keynote address. It was rather interesting. Kenmore got a shout-out, and he has written a new book, and the book is called The Emotional Infrastructure of Places, and Kenmore is in it. The Hangar. So we, Kenmore got a shout-out, I think it was because I hollered, and he saw me there in the front row. He was talking about things going on in San Antonio, some others said, and he's in Kenmore, Washington. So, so we got a shout-out with about four thousand people there. So it was, it was a really good meeting. There was a lot of good classes, a lot of good subject matter, so.
The mayor is quoted in the book. Can I read his quote? Okay, page one seventy, talking about the hangar in Town Square. Mayor Baker told me, quote, "The hangar has exceeded my wildest expectations, become a major gathering spot and a love note for the city." End quote.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it really has. I mean, this place, I never thought it would be as successful as it's gotten in such a short a time. It's pretty amazing. It's a tremendous asset to our city. Also, it has come to my attention, and I think the rest of the council's attention, that at a private swearing-in ceremony at the end of the month, I think on the thirtieth, a flag, there's a request to fly a flag, so if there are no objections, we will allow that to happen on the thirtieth of December.
Can, can you give a little more information?
Like what?
So remind, I think it would help everybody here to understand that we have two swearing-in ceremonies.
We have, we have a private one.
Right.
That is before the end of the year. So if some dire emergency happened at twelve oh one, New Year's Eve, or New Year's Day, excuse me, a little after midnight, we would all be sworn in and could take action. Because this election, there were four of us up, that means the majority of the council is out of office as of eleven fifty-nine, fifty-nine, on the thirty-first of December. So in order to keep continuity in the government, we have two swearing-ins. We have a private one that just takes care of the legalities toward the end of the year, and then we have a formal one where we can invite different people to come swear us in, and we, yes, so anyway, that's why the two ceremonies. One is so the family and everybody can be there, and one is, is for the public's benefit.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, if there's no other action coming before us, we are.